...branding, so basically it's something that has been used for, the policy has been used for quite a while, we just kind of made it a little clearer.
Okay. Frank had something in his notes about asking for a waiving of the second reading. Was that a wish from the committee or?
I would recommend that second reading be waived and this be acted upon.
I've been given the fact we've been using this in some minor revision.
Okay. Approval of this comes as a motion from the committee?
Yes.
Is that correct? So there is no second meeting? Is there any other discussion or questions on this one?
I think if we are going to waive it, even though it's a recommendation, it's first reading from committee, we should have a formal motion for the waiving.
Okay. And I'll ask for a motion to waive the second reading. Tom?
Yeah, I guess I would make the motion to waive the second reading.
Do I have a second to that motion? Martha? Okay. Now, any discussion questions on policy 5534? Frank?
Just real brief comments, I want to add that John Topper works very closely with the Department of Education, upgrading the medication policies, the nursing services, a component of programs.
Seeing no questions or additional comments, all those in favor of approving procedure 5534, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, anyone abstaining? Okay, thank you. Okay, Tom, moving on, was that, well, those were the exhibits. So now we're on ad hoc policy. Louise, Jeff, and Lynn, and we're on 6430, student assessment program. Anyone from the ad hoc policy committee? I'm sorry, 6460. Thank you. Yeah. He was cheering with me. 6460, student assessment program.
If you find what?
Policy procedure?
Segment of it. It's a student assessment testing. And again, language recommendations were adjusted to reflect current usage, language culture. But there is a set of adjustments that I'm going to recommend that the committee is also unaware of, and that is on the procedure. It's identified as page one and on the backside, page two. And on the procedure, it has at the top, a use of cross out test when you find assessment results, to use the word assessment instead of test.
No, third grade reading.
And at the bottom of the page, it has grade one, grade two, grade three, grade four, tests are done at those grade levels. Are you on that page?
Right.
Okay. Evaluation for me, Leadership Council had made a recommendation that I think makes sense in terms of the local writing assessment. And we actually had this in place in two of the three situations. But the writing assessment, it's done the year before, the fourth, eighth, and 10th grade, W K C E testing. Now, for example, that is true, it currently exists with the third grade, we do a local writing assessment. At seventh grade, we do a local writing assessment before the eighth grade, W K C E. But if you turn to the backside of that sheet on the top, 10th grade, we do both the W K C E and the writing assessment. And the committee is suggesting that the local writing assessment be done at the ninth grade, the year before the W K C E, just as it is with the third grade and seventh grade, local writing assessment. So that they have that year in which to work on those particular skills before the 10th grade assessment in this particular case. It would be consistent with the other two grade levels. And then to delete the sixth grade writing assessment, that's being redundant. That's the recommendation of that committee, and I believe that it makes sense.
So just to recap, that local writing assessment at grade three, at grade seven, and at grade nine, to precede the W K C E test, and is that what we currently?
No.
Is it, is it a recommendation? What is this committee is through leadership, and is it in accordance with director curriculum plan?
When we looked on speech on that, because the easier one had brought that.
Okay. In reviewing the agenda for this evening, I met with Frank and just brought to his attention that we met on this issue last week. And actually, it was a group of pre-K-12 language arts instructors who we were working with last week on our school sequence project. And one of the things that was accomplished that day was this suggestion from them, specifically on the writing assessment. So having done that and then reading the agenda, I said to Frank, we need to catch this. So that's basically what it is, we're just communicating between you.
Thank you, Don. Anything further, Lynn? Okay, Tom.
I wondered if we could perhaps just change the wording a little bit on the policy 6460, the first page we were looking at. In the first section, it says, "The purpose of assessment is," and then number three, "to approve classroom assessment." Seems kind of redundant the way it's stated there, in terms of that change that sort of circular.
Yes, Frank?
I would add a word, and say procedures, classroom assessment procedures.
Okay. Okay, that's the intent.
Is that good, Tom?
Yeah.
Joe?
Well, just if somebody could briefly clue me in, maybe we did already, why we changed all the words from testing to assessment throughout these policies. And before, before you do, let me just say that at a recent board meeting, we had a presentation about our test scores. And I kept hearing that there were other assessments. So I guess I'm wondering if this is changing just the words, does it really mean test, or is it changing the whole meaning of how we actually assess children? So I guess I need to know that.
Okay, Jeff, did you?
Well, I guess when we're looking at it, the assessment is, could be more than just simply a test taken. It could be writing a paper, it could be giving a verbal presentation, or doing some sort of a project, rather than strictly being taken at hand with a test.
So I don't know if Jeff has the answer to this one, but so are we doing a complete philosophical change by changing our policy from the word test to assessment? Now, I understand that in the state and the nation, we have standardized assessment and what's that other garbage we hear so much often? Standardized assessment. So are we changing our philosophical belief on how we evaluate how children are doing? And I'd like to know what ramifications would be if we changed this word test to assessment. I guess I'm not real clear on how broad this word is going to change things in this district.
Will someone, committee?
Yes, and maybe Louise wants to comment as well. I feel assessment is a more encompassing word, and test, test implies you sit down and you write a test. That is part of it. That is part of one of the ways we assess kids. But their assessment is more inclusive, and it covers, for example, a writing assignment. That might not be a test, as some people might interpret the word test, but there are also tests. So assessment is a bigger term, and test is a more specific term. Assessment is also more of a current language in how, in the language of education right now. So we felt comfortable with that because it included demonstrations, perhaps in a lab, it included writing assignments, writing essays, as opposed to a test that could be perhaps even misinterpreted as just a number on numbered item on a table. So I guess that's where I'm coming from, as assessment includes more. I don't think it changes philosophy, and I think it pretty much spells out what we intend to do in our district in the procedure.
Well, I'm trying not to belabor this, Frank. First of all, when I went to school and they gave us a writing sample to do, it was called a test, whether it was writing a map. So it was a writing test, even though you had to write a paragraph and a half, and I went to tell you how I did. But the other concern that I had in changing this would be, and this may come up again, and it came up that particular night when we talked about test scores, would be how we assess children in our district should have some hand in glove, so a word, should go hand in glove with how I believe that they are assessed if they're going to college, that they're going to two-year test school. I certainly believe we ought to give our kids every opportunity we can by looking at them differently, trying to help them understand something differently, what I mean by that. But I don't want to lose sight of what people up the line are going to require of kids that leave our school district and then go to another school district. So the word assessment, by itself, sounds innocent, and I understand everyone who places that to be in the correct language with whatever else is going on today. I'm a little concerned about the use of that assessment. And if we change our philosophical statement by changing that, or belief by changing that word in these policies, I need a little bit more time to digest it. So I'm going to have to not support this tonight, all because I'm not quite sure yet on what that really, really means in our district. I certainly know that what Lynn was saying, that makes a lot of sense to me, but I just, I need more time to think about that word assessment, if it's going to make such a change.
Is this up for first reading, third?
Third.
It's been up a couple times before. Okay, Lynn?
I move approval of the third reading with the recommendations from leadership committee. And as an instructor from tech, Joe, I'd love to sit down with you and talk to you about how technical students are assessed, based on your comments. But I think, because this is third reading, and I don't think it's, I appreciate your comments, and I'd be glad to talk with you. But I think it's, third reading, we've gone over this, we've had several administrators speak to us regarding it, and I think it's ready. So as, as a committee member, and Jeff and Louise can speak to the motion as well, but this is a committee recommendation.
Okay, so that's a recommendation from the committee, approval of this policy and procedures on the third reading? Okay.
As amended.
As amended, okay. Any further discussion on this? Martha?
Well, when I look at the procedure, number one was the district-wide testing schedule, and it looks like every grade is going to be in there. So I feel like they are getting a test every single grade, at least. And then the rest of it is in addition to that, so I'm comfortable with it.
Okay, Lynn? Did you have something?
First of all, did you get a second on the motion?
It was from committee.
Okay, okay, gotcha. Yeah, yeah, I have a question that.
You'll need a second because the piece was amended.
Okay, never mind, I need a second. Would you like to second? Okay, do I have a second? Okay, now on, Matt, to you. Thank you.
Going along with Joe and Martha's here, I mean, this is the first thing that hit me, was changing the word assessment. First of all, I thought, are we trying to slide around the state with the requirement of the examination and standards? And then you read this, well, first off, it says Wisconsin reading comprehension test. How come assessment wasn't there, was there? Martha brought up down farther here, where, you know, you have district-wide testing schedule, why not district-wide assessment schedule? I mean, I'm not sure on this yet. Go ahead.
Frank?
I think we erred behind B in not putting district-wide assessment schedule. However, the name of the third grade reading piece is a test. And if you look at the grade six, it is the Otis Learning School Ability Test, that is the corporate name of that instrument.
Here's then the second part that I want to ask, is this something that learning professionals have found that if we use the word test, it tightens up some youngster's mind? Have we used a big word like examination or assessment that they don't understand it or what?
I don't know. That's true.
Lynn?
I was at the meeting, and I was, we just changed the word to assessment because it was, everything that we did in this procedure is a way of assessing students. I consider tests as being a specific way that you can do some assessments, but there are other ways that you can evaluate or assess the students. So I, I don't see that there's any problems with the words in here.
Go ahead, Lynn.
Well, then we have, we're assurance, the committee's assurance, everybody else's assurance, that we're not trying to slide around and get away from testing them. I mean, there is still going to be testing then for students.
The state is still referring to the seniors taking a graduation test.
Okay.
And that's great, that's the incorporated name at this point in time anyway, of that instrument that is used to evaluate students before they're allowed to graduate, without saying either assessment or.
Okay. I'm thinking for purposes of our policy, we want a broader term, because this is the policy that's talking about everything. Does it necessarily change the testing program? I'll go with Tom first, and then to you, Joe.
Well, I think it's demonstrated just in view here, you know, there's some things that are tests, and they're named tests, and they're called tests, and they look like tests. There are other things. And a writing assessment is not a test, as we know, and a writing assessment is a different sample of kids' work, it's an assessment. So I mean, I think already we're doing that, we're just kind of calling it the broader name already.
Chad, what do you think from the students' viewpoint? Do you have a?
I'm not particularly affected by that graduation test, as it's called, but I think it's just the terminology in that they'll still be doing the appropriate methods of finding their skill level, whether they call it a test or an assessment. It's just, I guess we do need to specify the terminology that we use, though.
Thanks, Chad. Joe, did you have something for?
Two points. Sorry that this got so involuntary, but I wish you understood my concern.
Me too.
And part of that concern is from the meeting that we had, when we talked about the W K C E exams, and I heard from several people in the audience, administrators, telling us that while our test scores were low, that there were other ways to assess children. So that gives me a concern about our kids leaving this district, and maybe being assessed one way, and getting to a higher, a higher level of education and being, having to take tests and maybe even express that. So that's one point. The second point I want to make is that if in fact this refers to test and assessments, then maybe that's what we ought to be saying, standardized test and assessment guidelines. Because you talk about assessments in one part, you've crossed out tests here, you've got assessments in other parts, and tests in other parts, maybe then it ought to be test and assessment, standardized test and assessment guidelines. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
I'm just, I'm trying to think of a sentence that you would do the same thing. We talked about our W K C E test scores as being not what we want them to be, as an example, but there are other ways of testing students, or assessing students, or evaluating students, or judging their skill level.
Kurt?
When it comes down to it, we're going to set a graduation policy, right?
Yeah.
And that graduation policy is something we decide on, whether we're going to base it 100% on the student score in the graduation test, or whether or not we want to include some alternative form of assessment. And we have, we have the leniency to do that, correct?
Mm-hmm.
So I don't have a problem with assessment, I guess.
Lynn, did you have something for? Okay, seeing nothing further then. We'll vote on the motion to approve policy 6460 and procedure 6460, one, two, and three. For, that's come up for the third time, this will be final approval.
As amended.
As amended. Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Right.
Anyone abstaining? Okay. That motion carries, and the policy and procedures are approved. Next, policy 6610, selection of educational materials. And that is ad hoc as well? Okay. Louise, Jeff, and Louise, does anyone have any comments on 6610?
This was one that had been carried over, and that several people had reviewed, including Mr. Lebal and Mr. Blair, and we received the information on the original committee that had developed it. And we fine-tuned it with reconsideration of material, citizens' request forms, and textbook and educational materials, because originally, procedure 6610-2 had been textbook only, and, and our library personnel and personnel made us very aware that educational materials now include software, and video, and cassette, and all other forms of resources. So the recommendation from committee includes many people's input, and we're comfortable with this. The recommendation from committee.
Is this coming up for final recommendation as well?
The second.
Second meeting?
Yes.
Tom?
At this point, are we just considering the policy, or also the procedure on 6610?
Both. Go ahead, Tom.
6610-2, I guess, I guess it's kind of, I give some of the philosophical question there, textbook and educational materials, selection and review procedures. It's a page where the first two paragraphs were completely cut out, and the third paragraph, I guess I was struck by the final line there, we talked about the selection, preparing, distribution, management of textbooks and educational materials is a prime responsibility of the director of curriculum. Final approval shall be obtained from the Board of Education. That suggests to me that somehow we have to be involved with all the textbook purchases and other kinds of transactions, and maybe I'm just not reading that correctly.
I think Don can speak to that. He's presented things before, and it's in a, it's in a, for example, when it's a math curriculum work, the math books are out here, we've looked at them, and we have an opportunity to go to his office and look at them, and then it's a, it's really a budgetary kind of approval. I guess maybe Don could speak to that.
Don, do you have any comments on the question?
Several years ago, we made a switch relative to textbooks in the district. I have no account for textbooks in my office, just so everyone knows that. We have, the elementary textbook account is with the elementary principals, the middle school textbook account is with the middle school principal, the high school textbook account is with the high school principal. Five years ago, we put together a schedule, and it took quite a while, because when I started here, we were buying textbooks on an annual basis at three different levels, and, and often in three different content areas. So what we did is put together a schedule, which you've seen, I'm sure, I have it framed up behind my desk, we have 16 content areas spread over eight years. However, last year, we made a significant change there because we did not have the funds to continue the schedule, so we virtually have doubled it in length, because that was one of the cuts that was made at the elementary level to do that. In addition to that, the, what happens is the high school, middle, and the middle school and elementary grade-level coordinators work with us on a selection process of materials that they want for their specific area. And then the funds are allocated through the different levels, and that's about the end of the story.
Tom?
The issue wasn't that as much as, you know, we just got something tonight talking about all the textbook purchases for this year. Is the board supposed to actually review these and somehow give approval to this?
Frank?
We do do that, and a year ago, we cut the math textbook purchase in half, I believe it was, at the elementary level. So that, that was done somewhat in advance, half of the books were purchased in one fiscal year and then half another year. The issue here, I think the issue here, much you said more, is the selection process of the books, not how they get paid for.
Exactly. It isn't, I mean, I'm certainly not an expert on which math book to purchase for the honors math program, or something, I mean, that obviously is something done by the faculty.
Right, and so, part of what Don was saying is that we've established a committee of the staff members that bring in textbooks from a variety of publishers, and they review them based on curriculum, their needs, and they make the recommendation that goes through Don and leadership, and ultimately should come here, especially if we're changing the textbook vendor and the program that's provided in the textbook. And I think that's why this last sentence is in here, so that the board can approve, especially if there's going to be a significant change.
Go back to the very first policy, Tom, and in the first paragraph, where it says, "The Board of Education is the governing body, is legally responsible for all educational materials relating to the operation of the Merrill Area Public Schools." It kind of ties in with that, in that since we're responsible for the curriculum, we modify the textbooks and so on that are brought to us as educational materials on the recommendations of the staff. Louise, I'm sorry, Louise, did you have further questions?
I guess I'm just assuming that we would delegate that responsibility to the people who are experts in the field, as opposed to that coming at us every time to, you know, determine what, if I had textbooks, which should be used. I'm certainly comfortable with those people making those kind of decisions, I guess, as experts.
Louise?
Whenever we chose textbooks, there always was board approval, and it always happened. But I can remember a situation way back, when the board questioned content, I don't remember who was on the board, but it had to do with naked bodies, and body parts, and stuff in biology, and, you know, how are you going to present this stuff? And that was, that was an issue with board getting involved in the selection process.
Thank you. Joe?
Sometimes it does come up.
Joe?
Well, I in essence agree with Tom about the professionals, and I mean professional staff, as well as administrative team, making recommendations. I do believe that it is our responsibility and our charge as a board to oversee what materials are being taught in these schools. Whenever curriculum changes, that it's a board function to review, listen to, oppose and cons of that curriculum, and therefore approve it or not approve it. And I do believe that there was, in fact, I'm going to ask Pat if, at the next meeting, we can talk about this, or maybe not the next meeting, but very shortly, there was a human growth and development committee that I don't believe was ever disbanded, is just froze for a while, but has not met since '98. And I believe that the human growth and development committee had a wide spectrum of community members on that committee, and I think, I'm wrong, please correct me, but I think they also did things like review textbooks with the committee when they're purchasing textbooks to see what's, what's being presented. Now that I've said that, I'd like to, if I could, just for another minute, go on, Pat. I would really like not to vote on this tonight, simply because I have not had a chance again to digest all of the changes in this, and this is a really critical policy. I certainly appreciate the folks' work that worked on it, but I need some time to digest these changes. I'll give an example. As Tom mentioned, when we were on 6410, the procedure, the first two, almost three paragraphs were completely rewritten, and it leaves the director of curriculum as responsible. If anything, I would like to leave the director of curriculum, as well as professional staff in there somehow, rather than taking them completely out of that particular piece. Because when you read a little further through it, there is another part that talks about professional staff, and I can't pinpoint it right now. This has got, and I guess maybe I, I do apologize if I've been neglecting not reading on this sooner, but I'll tell you the truth, it's got so many changes, I'm just not comfortable with this tonight, and I would like to request the board to hold off approving this until we can have a little bit more. off approving this until we can have a little bit more time to read it over. Digest it all.
Are you requesting, are you making a motion?
No, I'm not making one. Just ask them if the board will be willing to do that, by consensus.
Okay.
Yeah, this is coming from the committee.
Coming from the committee. Ask the second meeting.
Yes.
Okay. Ron?
On Exhibit eleven, page two, number two, under B, I have some question there. Is there something missing that says criteria should consider community values and mores?
No, it'd be, uh, soup above, uh, yes.
Okay. We went like, it's, my part doesn't seem that it's a different word.
Okay.
All right. I guess if we are to decide to send this back to committee, I would like to ask that, um, in the future, if people do have questions or concerns, that they either try to look at them, they've had a time before we come to the board meeting, or please attend a committee meeting and bring up for discussion so that we don't have to keep bringing stuff back and back and back. And that's not just for our committee.
Okay. Don, head to the side.
Okay, just two points of clarification. My relative to Joe's, uh, question here does spell out, um, in the third paragraph, the broad nature of the people who are involved in the selection process, and, uh, that's just-
The third paragraph on what, Don?
On the selection of educational materials.
Policy? Okay. Thank you.
It does spell out that who's involved in that selection process. And then, ju- just for clarification too, we talked about the curriculum and we talked about the textbook. We've, we've done an awful lot of work in the district to align our curriculum to the state standards, so we can be assured we are teaching a standards referenced curriculum. And then, uh, in the ideal world, you would have all of the vendors out there competing with each other with standards-based textbooks. Now, most of them have done alignment to the national standards, which Wisconsin standards are aligned to. So, to make a long story short, we select materi- we select textbooks to best match up with the curriculum that the teachers have worked on. So, i- in, in essence, they're all part of the process. They pick a resource that will best help them carry out what they've laid out in their curriculum map. And, and so, just so we delineate between the curriculum and, and the textbook.
Okay. Um, Joe, are you requesting that the board simply postpone this till the next meeting or that we send it back to committee?
If I could, uh, clarification on why I've asked for this. I had to leave here last Wednesday, uh, and that's why I was not with the board members down in Wausau, and I was in Milwaukee throughout, uh, the rest of the weekend, got tied up all weekend. That's why I haven't had, I normally have all this stuff read and my questions are asked. I want to make that very clear. Um, I'm requesting that the board give consideration to either send it back to committee or allow for some time to digest it, so I can ask that committee some questions, because I'm, I'm just not comfortable with a couple of things. And in regards to what Dr. Vagut just said, let me refer, let me just mention this to the board, without trying to be antagonistic. Uh, I have found, since I've been on the board, that you have to be specific and clear and consistent in policies. And I have found that on occasion, things have slipped quite often through the cracks in this district. And I, this is such an important issue in my estimation for this community, that I don't want to see anything have a chance of slipping through. So, in other words, if the staff is going to be involved in this, which they should, then it should be spelled out in here. It should be not left to chance. It's spelled out in the policy, but it's not in the procedure, that I can see. But I haven't read it all, so that's why I'm asking for a delay.
Okay. Lynn?
Um, I can't speak for everybody on the committee, but we do have a committee meeting coming up Tuesday the sixth at eight-thirty a.m. And, um, I'm, I'm, I guess unless there's a motion, I don't have a problem with reviewing the, the questions and concerns, giving anyone on the board an opportunity to look at it. Um, but I guess I, I look to you, Madam President, to sort us through all the Robert's rules. But that's our next meeting, Tuesday the sixth of November at eight-thirty. That would be timely, because it would be more than, be before the next meeting.
Okay. So, I will ask then, either we will vote on this or we will send it back to committee on November sixth. Is there objection from anyone on the board to sending this back to committee on November sixth? Okay. Seeing no objection, then we will table the motion or postpone the motion that was on the, on the floor, um, to the next meeting and, um, send this back to committee on the sixth.
And thank you kindly.
Okay. You're welcome. We have one last policy, fifty-two-thirty, public school choice. It is what we do for this.
Uh, this is another one that I'm requesting a waiver of a second reading. Uh, if you look at this policy, you will note that we actually, I went to the back page, uh, adopted this a couple of years ago when the public school choice program came into being. The changes, there are two changes, two types of changes, uh, being recommended by the committee. Uh, one is to eliminate the term, uh, limits. On the policy page, I have number one, the third line down in the middle, what we do to class size limits. We do not have class size limits in our district. And the other two changes are highlighted on the second and third pages, and those are the recommendation of Val Wasek at WASB to keep us in compliance with revised statutory guidelines related to the open enrollment procedures.
Okay. Any further comments from the committee members? Jeff?
Well, I would move that we waive the first reading or the second reading on this policy.
Okay. Do I have a second to that motion? Louise? Any further comments, Jeff? Louise? Any comments, questions from the board? All those in favor of waiting a second reading and approving policy fifty-two-thirty signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? Okay. We have three policies. Um, there are going to be new donations to accept this evening, I don't care. Um, Aiden L. is board travel. Um, Mr. Harrington had requested that we spend, uh, look at the NSBA.
I have a couple. Actually, one has come in since the mailing. I included in the mail-in, the National School Board Association Convention, which this year is being held in San Diego, April, April sixth through the ninth, and passing around the board policy, uh, which deals with board member attendance at conferences, so that, you know, have this understood. And the second paragraph, uh, talks about national conventions, that you may have no more than three board members attend, and they shall be during their first or second year of their three-year term, uh, should they so choose. So, I'm presenting this now. I don't know that we have an immediate, uh, need for a response, but I would like to get some preliminary thought about the intent of the board in terms of sending something.
Okay. Um, as before, I, I ask who might be interested in doing that. I did ask Pat Arnt, just as a matter of curiosity, what our board travel budget was for this year. It's eight thousand dollars, and we have currently spent nine hundred and thirty-six dollars and fifty cents on board travel and meetings. So, we're doing pretty good. Um, is there anyone that is interested, that proposed the criteria, that is interested in going to the National School Board Convention this year? If there's any preliminary interest? Lynn?
I always have preliminary interest, because I think it's, it's absolutely critical. I'm, I'm just going to show this. I'm, I'm not putting my name in, but the reason I have interest in it is because I, I've had the opportunity, I know Gail Rogers, Pat weather went several years, and Gail Rogers went and brought back excellent reports. Um, I've had the absolute wonderful fortune to go. We didn't go send anyone last year, but the year before, I went to Orlando, and that's where I worked, uh, and went, attended many workshops on teacher evaluation. And, um, after being appointed to that committee, it, it was invaluable, and we're actually using the format from Coventry, Rhode Island, that, that I brought back to the committee, plus other, other research, of course, from Charlotte Daniels. But, um, so, I, I think the reality is that I would rather see us use, use our, our board travel and workshop professional development money in our own state, because we are under declining enrollment, and we have some limitations. So, um, I'm not going to make any motions, but I'm telling you, it's a wonderful opportunity. You have a real sense of where our state is in the nation. And, uh, we, we tend to look through the microscope at, especially at things that we're focusing on locally, when, when in fact, Wisconsin looks wonderful in comparison to many other public school districts in our nation. So, sometimes just sitting back and assessing it in, from, from that vantage point, gives you a whole new look. And it gets you certainly current opportunities to bring back. But, reality is, we're in a declining revenue state, and, uh, going to New Orleans may not be a wise financial use of our money.
Okay. Um, I'll bring this back at the next board meeting, and we can let people think about it, and then just take a final count or a motion to see what we want to do with that. Joe?
Well, again, I'm not going to make a motion tonight either, but I would remind, uh, but the board members were here last year, and it was last year, I think it was, last year?
You said you were more than late last year.
Oh, no, I'm not talking about just the national. Um, I'm talking about, uh, the state one. So, Frank's going to need that information pretty soon, but I would like the board to be reflecting on that, and there was motion made by board members no longer here, that we limited to either two or three. Because of what Lynn just said, declining enrollment, we don't, no. We also got to show by example, that we expect to have other people in our district, so I'd just like people, everybody to remember, um, and think about, between now and the next time that we put it on the agenda pad, I think we ought to limit the number of people that goes down to the, that we're going to send down to the state convention, as well as Lynn's suggesting that we don't send anybody at the national level, all because, uh, we're in this retrenchment mode with our finances right now, and we're expecting other people to do the same. We need to set the example. I also want to just real quickly point out that I happen to believe that some of the things that we go, we go to are very important themes and information for us as a district. Unfortunately, since I've been on this board, uh, we don't seem to employ and put any of those into effect when we come back. So, we, as a board, need to do a little bit better job of maybe trying to get that out and, and taking some action on those things. My opinion.
Thank you. Um, I will then, uh, we'll put the NSBA convention and the state meeting convention on the next agenda, so if you'll think about that and ask for motions on that. Um, we do have approval for people to attend on November tenth, the WASB Legislative Issues Conference, which is at North Central Tech in Wausau. Can I have a count of people who are able to go with that? If anyone knows at this time? I definitely am going. Does anybody else? Ron?
I have a question with that.
Okay. Go ahead.
Anyway, one of the things that we should recognize with this November tenth is that as a board, we should select our board member, who will be our delegate at the state, because that will also give them a, a step up if they attend this meeting now.
Okay. So, we should have that in place before the meeting?
Right.
If we can?
Give it hell.
Okay. Um, Louise, you were interested in going as well? If, um, Senator Decker is going to be there as the speaker, and he was just appointed to head the committee, um, to look at school finances and revamping of school finances, so, you know, I think any contact we can make, um, with that will be good. So, for sure. Lynn?
Um, yeah, just in, I'm, I'm not able, the other thing that we had passed as a board was for one person to go to the WISPA, and I am not able to do that, so that is actually savings to the district in terms of our board travel expenditures. That was actually a, a three-day workshop and, and with lodging at Heidel House, so that would have been several hundred dollars. So, I'm not able to go to that. So, but the board did pass for one person to go, so just for information. The other thing is, November tenth is a possibility for me. I, I cannot tell you at this point.
That's fine. If you would let Sue know, maybe as soon as you know. All right. Joe?
What was the Heidel House thing?
Um, it was that, it was a convention on the seventh on, um, communications and selling the invisible, um, selling the invisible, another one's working on selling, uh-
I see.
So, you don't know the product. Very good. Um, and, well, then Laura is going to go there, and she cannot go. So, so far, I have three people down for the tenth, Louise, Ron, and myself. And anyone else that is able to go, if you would let Sue know as soon as possible.
I have two more.
Go.
On the, on the reverse side of this policy, I put the minutes from the September twelfth meeting, and I put an asterisk near the bottom, uh, board travel for the WASB convention in January in Milwaukee. And at that board meeting in September, Lynn, Jeff, Louise, Ron, and Pat indicated an interest in attending that meeting. And by policy, you all may attend that. And we're coming to the point where I'm going to want to send reservations in. This is going to be last call, and give you until the end of next week, and I'll probably send an email reminder out for you to pick up on that.
Okay. So, this can't wait till the next meeting? We need to tell you by ni- by the end of?
I don't want to get that taken seriously.
The ninth?
The ninth.
By November ninth?
Yes.
Lynn?
I, in, in looking this over, I see you say no file currently is necessary until the end of October. Our meeting is until the fourteenth, um, so-
That's more than that.
You say in here, by the October.
That's, this is the end of October today. Now, I'm, I'm giving-
Final commitment?
By the end of October. And I'm giving you an extra week.
But then, the motion is until November fourteenth, so I'm wondering if we, in fact, should not make a motion for board of ed travel.
We do have to.
I, I, I'm thinking with the timing, and I can get to it. So, I'm with approval for any board member to go to the Milwaukee State Convention for the school board.
Okay. Do we have a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
Anything further, Lynn?
No, I just think it's a wonderful opportunity. There's, there's an incredible exchange of ideas at this, at this convention. This is a working convention. This is, um, people that have attended it go to the workshops. This is a phenomenal opportunity to see what's happening in education across the state and to bring things back, I do every year.
Ron?
I agree with Lynn, and there's very, uh, little free time for the people that go down there, if you commit to the convention.
That's true.
Uh, because of the learning possibilities there, so I mean, there's, but then we come back here, there's so little time given to the delegates, even the board on, what they did pick up on because of all the pressing issues that we have to. So, we just use that experience and throw out the rest of the year then.
Joe?
Well, I thought we would wait till next meeting, but I understand why we can't. So, I would move to amend the motion, uh, to limit to three BRE members to attend the WASB convention in Milwaukee, for the reasons that I have mentioned, uh, that we need to set the example as the, the board. I believe that our funding does not allow us to send, um, I think we sent three, or was it two last year? Two?
Three.
Three, it was three last year by that motion from that board member. So, I would make a similar motion again, uh, because of the financial constraints of our district, I don't think we should be sending everybody to that convention.
Do we have a second on the amendment to the motion? Tom?
I have a second.
Okay. Any discussion on the amendment to the motion to send three people? Martha?
If they don't-
Oh, I'm sorry. Joe, did you have any?
No, I said, thank you.
Tom, did you have any comments?
No, I, I think we did something similar last year, or sent three, and it just makes sense to me, given the financial situation, to, to put some limits on ourselves.
Okay. Martha?
I wonder if we have an approximate cost per person, what it would, for the, like, the three days of leisure, or meal?
Um, the rooms run approximately, I'm trying to off the top of my head, the number, a hundred and fifteen, a hundred and thirty dollars a night for three nights.
And we share. We share.
We share. In fact, at one point, Louise and Lynn and I all shared a year.
Absolutely.
So, I'm, I'm sorry, Martha, I guess we don't have exact numbers for you, but is that close?
I think that's pretty close. I have a, I have an October letter that was set up from Hyatt.
The other thing that the board members that attended the state convention last year agreed to do is to take their per de- agreed to do is to take their per diem and not turn in food expenses plus. So they just took the per diem. And so that did save, it wasn't a lot, but it was again, so we dug into our pockets for the food.
You're right. I think we tried to be fiscally responsible and we only took, I think, the half a day. We didn't take the double meeting, thirty dollars on a couple of days. And we tried to share rooms and do some other things. I think we've been really good this year so far about trying to attend the local conferences. I mean, we've been to several conferences. Most, I think almost all of them have been in Wausau, which has been wonderful.
Louise?
My only question that would relate to this amendment is how many sectionals are happening at the same time? And if more than three people were able to go, would we benefit by having more than three people? When we had science conventions and there would be a half a dozen of us, we were all in different rooms. We never saw each other. So you know, if we're cutting back in other places, I think the information and we need to know more. That's my feeling.
There are lots of things to cover multiple times. You're right. And we do usually split up those of us who have been in the past. I think that's pretty common.
Any further discussion on the amendment? Okay. All those in favor of the amendment to amend the motion to limit the number of people going to three, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Do you want to do show of hands or you want to roll?
We'll roll call vote please.
Do we do roll call votes? Ron Bame?
Nay.
Kurt Echols?
Aye.
Joel Fink?
Aye.
Tom Muller?
Aye.
Jeff Peterson?
Nay.
Martha Sandholm?
Aye.
Louise Schutz?
Nay.
Lynn Zentner?
Nay.
Pat Berg?
Nay.
I believe that's five to four. Okay. The amendment did not pass. Now we were looking at the original motion. The original motion is to allow any board member. Is that right, Sue? Do we read that back? Any board member to attend the state convention? Okay.
Can the board or I'd like to request a roll call vote, please?
Certainly. Okay. We are voting on the original motion to allow any board member to attend the state convention. Sue, would you do a roll call vote, please? Kurt Echols?
Nay.
Joel Fink?
Nay.
Tom Muller?
Nay.
Jeff Peterson?
Aye.
Martha Sandholm?
Nay.
Louise Schutz?
Aye.
Lynn Zentner?
Aye.
Ron Bame?
Aye.
Pat Berg?
Aye.
That's then five to four. That motion carried then. Any board member is free to attend the convention. Need to let Sue or Frank know by November 9th. Is that correct? That's enough time?
Yes.
Yes.
Give a minute. Before you run, did you want to have a break or anything?
I'm going to. I just wanted to address Ron's question about having a D O S B representative be appointed. It is not, we don't have that person. I didn't appoint someone when we did the committee assignments. Generally, we vote on that person. Is that something we can do this evening?
I don't know. Technically, you probably shouldn't, but you may have a consensus to identify an individual who would be willing to take that responsibility without a vote.
Martha?
Since they haven't decided who's going and who isn't yet, it would be, I mean, I wouldn't feel comfortable knowing if the person could go and then voting, so we don't have to do it again if they can't.
Well, that's true. The person that obviously the person who's chosen needs to attend the state convention. Good point about that. Ron has done it in the past. I don't know if he's willing to do it again or if anyone else is interested in it. Anyone else interested in?
Yes, I'm willing, but the educational point of view that you get being a delegate down there is unmeasurable. Just listening to the other schools propose and argue the resolutions that are presented down there. And it is raw with it. You come back with a lot of experience of how to argue a point back at your local school board.
I guess we do need to look at appointing that person on the 14th then. So we will do that on the 14th. We will take a break. We will come back and do computer technology and the finance committee and then we'll move into executive session.
During your break, if everyone reads these, you don't not have to do anything with them tonight, but read them.
The next item on the agenda is the computer technology report. Mr. Grouban?
We're hoping to have Chris Dolkey here tonight as well. Chris Dolkey here is one of the primary consultants, technicians that we use for the Goliath firm. All of you have seen that in the budget voucher reports. Chris is at our governor's conference over in the Green Bay area today, tomorrow, maybe Friday. Doesn't have the opportunity to quickly drive over and back at this time of the night for this. But John has prepared some information about our computer technology relative to amount of material we have, monies we spend on various types of activities, and so on. And I'll let Lynn go through his report at this time.
As soon as he can, so I'll sort it.
Well, I have it on, if I, I hope you will indulge me. I'm doing double duty tonight so that if I go more than 60 minutes, I got to change the tape, so.
Well, hopefully we go about 15. Our timer will go off.
I always appreciate the opportunity here. The opportunity to talk to the board and at length on technology. You were talking earlier about in services and things on, I think, a very important area for in servicing is technology. And I think it's one of the things that would help. It's one of the things I would always run into problems with finding time and money for. The first thing that was being requested tonight was to talk a little bit about the expenditures. And the one that I just handed out, if I have that straight, is the elementary technology priority list, et cetera. Okay. What I have done over the years.
Joe, excuse me, if you have extra copies?
Oh, yes. I did make extra copies.
Thank you.
You can pass them out, though, please.
Thank you.
What I have done over the years is I've tried to create what I call priority lists in technology. If any of you deal with technology, you know that it's probably a tremendously broad subject area in terms of what people would consider to be technology and what people don't consider to be technology. I often confess that I'm not an expert because I do not know all the different kinds of technologies that are out there. So therefore, I have asked the different levels to actually have committees that would put these technology priority lists together. Their job is to prioritize them. And then my job is to go out and buy them. Now, there's one other important step, by the way, and Martha can speak to it. I also have a district level, a leadership technology committee, that before I go out and buy major purchases, I always take to that committee. I see that committee as my oversight committee, as well as a few other people. I can talk a little bit about the elementary one here because you will see that the last time it was updated, if you look in the upper left corner of the first page, I try to keep track of when I update my technology list. And the last time was June 2nd of 2001. Now that means this has not been updated for a while. The reason for that is Judy Weaver retired. And Judy Weaver was our elementary technology teacher and she was the lady who was the keeper of this list for me. Mike Giese has started that process now and with all of his other duties, he has not been able to get me an updated priority list as of this time. I know he's working on it. If you look at the format that I've used, and I'm going to go through the elementary one here, but I'm going to hand out the rest of them to you shortly so that you see them all. But the format is almost identical on all of them. I try to keep a number down the left side, one, two, three, what the priority is. Then the building or department that it would go to, then the contact person. Now, the contact person doesn't necessarily mean it was the person getting the machine because many times when it would come to me, they would say it's going to go to the third grade at Franklin, Franklin. Franklin doesn't exist anymore. I just think about Franklin because of Skyward. But anyway, at Jefferson. And sometimes I don't know which third grade they're referring to. So that sometimes this contact person doesn't necessarily mean it's the person that's receiving the technology. The next column, of course, item description, just tells you what it was, the quantity. And then the next, in fact, I think you will notice on, yes, the middle school level, it doesn't say price each, it says approximate price each. And this really is an approximate price. These are prices that either they establish on them or I will put on them if they don't put something there. And then the total. Now, because we ticked upon a few times the priority each and you get a total. It just gives me a guideline to go back to my leadership committee and say, I think we should buy down about this far on the priority list and it looks like it would be about X number of dollars. And then I go and do the research on it at that point. The next column is date added, and that's the date that it was added to this technology list. One of the things about technology is priorities change very quickly. It's possibly when you have one priority one day and the next day somebody's computer broke down that they have to have a new one and they get moved to the top of the list. So this is a very, and I really ask them to consider this to be very fluid, that they can change their priorities anytime they feel that they need to. So but I put down the date that I've added it to this list. Now, by the way, if the date is the first day of the month, it's an approximation again. I don't always remember to add this the same day that somebody makes the request. So some of these dates are going to be approximate. And I would guess anytime you see a zero, one is the date, is I try to remember back, let's see, that was last week or something, and I may miss that. The date completed is the date when I actually ordered the thing. Not the date that they received it, but the date that I ordered it. You can see on this first page, for example, that without names, that it does not look like I ever ordered this TV VCR mount at Jefferson Elementary. Okay? I don't know why. That was back on 17th. I don't know why that didn't get ordered yet. Oh, probably because it's fairly new and it's, I had moved those to the top of the list. That's not true because of priority there. I don't know why that wouldn't be there. And yet this HP printer for the iMac down a little while down, I ordered about May 4th, 2001, line 32, for those of you who are looking at that. So that is the priority list. I actually wish to add some columns to it because I want to keep track of a little more data down the road as to what's going on with all this stuff. Are there any questions that you have on this?
So John, this is the list that you use as people request things or need replacement things. They come to you and they get put on this list.
Okay. Now, they don't always come to me because on the elementary level, I, there is an elementary committee. And they go to that committee or more likely they will give Mike Giese a call. Now, what happens a lot is they actually call me and I'll say, I'll get, I'll put it on the elementary priority list and I'll get back to Mike and say, Mike, this person requested this. Now, we're going to be a little careful here because if it's a repair issue, if it's a repair issue, I don't put it on the priority list. And we tend to repair things if possible. If it's the second or third computer in their classroom and it breaks down because it's an Apple IIe, they don't automatically get a new machine to replace that. That machine then would go back in this priority list. So there's, you know, there's some gray area there and I will be the first one to admit this, that I haven't followed every one of those possible schemes as to, the really neat one that happened to me was someone had an old computer that we had gotten from Wausau Insurance. They had given it to us, put it in their classroom, didn't work. They wrote back and said, John, you have to replace my computer because it broke down. You know, well, I can't quite do that. So I said, no, I'll put you on the priority list and see how that pans out for you.
So this is new equipment? This is things you would like to purchase?
That's correct.
Are there any questions from board members on this? Jeff?
Trying to, in an effort to make it easier for you to attempt to do repairs, I hope, I trust that you have been trying to standardize this equipment as much as possible rather than just somebody saying, oh, I like a Sony camera, it's a Panasonic. And same thing with your printers and all that other stuff.
Thank you. That is, that's always been an area of mine. I think if those of you who attended the state of technology, I think it was it last year, Frank, where I actually showed the number of different types of printers and number of different types of cartridges we have to order for this district. It's phenomenal. Fifty or 75. I do try to standardize as much as I can. Two problems occur with that, though, Jeff. One, things don't stay the same very long in technology. And two, quite a few people still just go out and buy what they want to buy and then call me and say, John, I have this printer and I need the cartridge where we need it fixed. So we still have some of that problem, that situation going on here.
If we have that going on, this might sound a little hard-nosed, but maybe we ought to just tell them that we won't support it if it's not walked through the district. It's essentially what I'm faced with. We have something that's applied to us or is available on standardized equipment that will work with our programs. And if we want to do something differently, our company will support it.
Something that I think I'm too hard-nosed already, I guess would be one way to say that. And the other thing is, is many of these things are purchased with school monies or grant monies of some sort. So there is school money that's purchased and it's just not money that go through me. Okay?
Again, let me see.
I'll just say that, again, as long as we are going to be trying to support this and realizing the limited number of people we have and a huge number of contributors and vendors and everything else to try and keep that, whether you need to start a committee or whatever, that we should attempt to standardize as much as possible to make it easier for everybody involved.
That would be very helpful. I can tell you too that Frank, I think, a couple of years ago, put a directive out to, to that effect.
And something too that I have to reinforce, people were going to buy material, they had to be compatible at least with that which exists. I need to check through John to do that. And some of us are less than apt at following that.
And maybe that would be one way is that if you are looking at buying something for whatever reason, that would not be part of your purchases here, that it has to be cleared through you to assure that it is compatible with our software or hardware so that we don't cause problems by looking up something that's not.
Joe, did you have your hand up?
Never mind.
Okay.
I, and I apologize, Jeff, that I was handing those out while you were talking. I was listening. But I have handed out the PRMS technology priority list and the district technology priority list. There is no high school priority list that I have been involved with. I have heard now there is one, but I have not seen it. If you wish, Madam Chairman, I will go through them line by line like I did with the elementary one. I do wish, though, to point out on the middle school one. If you would notice in the update again, in the upper left corner, that the last update was done by Tim Mickey. Tim has been a tremendous guy at the middle school in organizing their technology and getting a committee together that really is giving direction at that level. For those of you who have been around here for a long time, at one time our middle school was very technology poor. And now with the leadership that we have there, it's becoming one of our leaders in the area of technology and it's really nice to see. The one problem I have with Tim, of course, is then he has so many requests all the time. all the time. And, uh, you can see on the last two pages that the blank white column, I always look at that white eight column because that means I haven't completed it. And you'll see that he has a page and a half of, of requests for this next year. Um, I'm kidding, I think that's great. That's what we want to see is people requesting the technology.
I think that's fine, John. It looks similar to the other one. I'll just ask if any board members have questions on that list? Seen that?
And Madam Chairman, with your, um, uh, permission, the only thing I want to mention about the district technology list, in my years in this position, I've realized that there are some sensitive areas that really wouldn't fit on an elementary list, a middle school list, a high school list. That often includes machines that would be, uh, going toward administrators or secretaries or things that aren't directly affecting students. Um, so there, and also, by the way, there's a lot of district infrastructure that gets put on the district list. So that's why, oh, also Head Start is not represented by elementary or middle school. Um, uh, I, I'd be careful because all three of these buildings over here, uh, I wouldn't want to leave one of them out. Uh, so those kinds of things appear on this district list. And any other, uh, School Forest, for example, would appear on this district list if it was brought to my attention. So that is why there is one called the district.
Fred?
Uh, primary, middle school, um, just for instance, if you look at overhead projectors, now, there's quite a list of requests for overhead projectors on their deliveries already. Um, and there seems to be a wide, uh, range there on the prices from thirty-five hundred down to two-hundred-and-fifty, or is that just a typele?
Um, that would be, what they really wanted was an overhead projector, they wanted LCD projectors, is what they found out at the time. Now, I actually take that back. That must be a typele because since they were purchased, it would be a typele, yes.
Okay. Then I guess the second part of the question is, then goes that put a, uh, overhead projector into each, uh, well, how do I want to say that? Tetherwind and Earth or, you know, in each division, thirteen, team, that's the word.
An overhead projector or an LCD projector? Um, overhead projectors are approximately two-hundred, three-hundred dollars. Almost every teacher has an overhead projector. Um, if I'm not mistaken, and help me on this, Tim, I think there were a couple of people that still needed them, so could you, if I may speak to the matter?
Um, regarding the overhead projectors, um, it is our goal for, as far as criteria, that each teacher have an overhead projector. There are a lot of reasons we see overhead projectors keep coming up, is now we're starting to replace the ones that we purchased in nineteen fifty and nineteen sixty-five. And, uh, that may seem like an old bit of technology, but still very valid for our teachers to replace items that you can't find bulbs through or the cords are unsafe. We don't want to create a fire hazard. So there's going to be a need for that two-hundred-and-fifty, three-hundred-dollar, uh, overhead projector because they're still very valuable pieces of technology in the classroom. We want to ensure all of our teachers have one.
Okay, thank you.
John, could you very briefly explain the difference between just an overhead and an LCD projector?
Uh, an overhead projector, you can take a transparency, transparent film, put it on it and the light shines through it and onto the thing. The, um, the LCD projector was one that you hook into a computer. And that's the one. Uh, LCD stands for liquid crystal diode, I think, doesn't it? Display, that's right, I get it. Mr. Getty-Verd.
Joe? Well, I missed, uh, that was a misprint. That's a misprint. How much is an LCD projector? How much is it?
On the third page of the PRMS, there it says overhead projectors.
How, how near? How much is it?
They're about between two and three-hundred-and-fifty dollars instead of thirty-five hundred. Now, it looks like one zero extra was added.
Sure. So the LCD projectors are thirty-five hundred?
Um, they can go anywhere from thirty-five hundred to twenty thousand. We have been buying about a thirty-five hundred dollar one. Actually, I think I paid thirty-two hundred dollars for this last one.
So the overhead projectors on this third sheet that Frank just referred us to, instead of thirty-five hundred, they'll sell two-hundred-and-fifty?
Three-hundred and fifty.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else, Jeff?
Sean, to what, to what degree can we take some of these computers that we have right now and rather than replacing them because they're three, four years old, add memory to them, whereas memory not so much property matters, the speed. And, and as I was going to stop further, commercial property really is that with, with the software that we're running.
I mean, that's, and that's a great question and, and it shows that you have some knowledge of, of technology right now. Um, depending on who you talk to, you will get a different answer on that. Several years ago, and, and I, I'll get to it, but, um, several years ago, I, I, Frank had asked me to give him a replacement, uh, idea of replacement of computers, and I think this is three, four years ago. And, um, a three-year replacement on computers, um, I think was what he asked for. I actually gave a three, four, and five-year replacement because to replace computers totally in three years is very, very expensive, especially with, uh, and I'm not talking about replacing every computer we have, I'm talking about replacing computers that are in, in key computers in the district. Our computer labs, um, in our classrooms, uh, not the second and third computer in the classroom, but the primary computer in the classroom. And, uh, there's no way we can do that on a three-year rotation. So therefore, we do have to make our computers last longer than three years. One of the ways you do that is by adding memory. Memory is fairly inexpensive, but you have technical limits as to how much memory you can put in older machines. So at some point, even that isn't a viable option. One of the things we do now is on old machines that we're going to throw away or whatever, not throw away, but discard, um, we pull the memory out of it and we actually plug as much of it into other machines as we can and technically can. But again, um, when I started computers, we were putting in four K, four thousand RAM chips, but we are now putting in a hundred-and-twenty-eight million RAM chips. So the technology has just gone very quickly. The other issue besides memory, of course, is the processor speed. And it's hard to, it's hard to convince someone that their computer that chugs along at four hundred megahertz is, is anywhere as close to being good as one that chugs along at one point four gigahertz billion cycles, which is what they're doing now. So most of the teachers or mostly the situations that I run into are they want the new technology. They, they don't want just the brand and the old stuff or, um, a new hard drive in it. They think they need the, the whole new CPU board, et cetera. Um, the middle school is a great example of that. Because they are fairly technology literate over there now, they come up with good rationale why they can't get that old seven-hundred-megahertz machine to do what they need to do.
Can we, can we, can I end on there? I think the other thing to note about our mission and our criteria at the middle school is that once new things come in, the, the older stuff that it's kind of replacing has other value for accelerated readers, accelerated math. Um, we're looking at if there was a lab replacement, then the IMAX could be used to, um, funnel down to using summon to the band to update their mini lab and, because they've got LC threes that, um, don't even work on the, the network and so forth. So part of being responsible with the resources that we get is that the resources that we replace go farther down so that, uh, they're utilized for kids. And that's the whole bottom line here. And, and what we can't support is, is the stuff that we can't support running the new software that's coming out. A lot of our purchases are because you start looking at Apple Work Six and you look at, uh, so many upgrades that, uh, LC, um, dial and so forth. You just can't run that stuff. It's no longer valid to us.
And I mean, um, the third component is the operating system. You know, there's, there's RAM, there's the process, processor speed, and then the operating system is so important. Uh, as Bill Gates once said, believe it is, uh, which is why you just saw this big splash for XP that just, that was just announced. Um, so as Tim was just saying, once you start moving into some of these newer operating systems, you can't even use the older machines. They just won't run on them, technically won't run on them. So we, we have that issue too. Um, I do, I do have a policy related to what Tim was saying in that when we put a new machine or put a whole new lab in, for example, into a building, I let the building decide to, decide what they wish to do with the old machines. Uh, they normally farm them out to, to classrooms or something. Instead of taking them back here and farming them out throughout the district, I, I'd like to keep them in the school where they came. I feel they have a better knowledge of their need than I do. Now, there are some instances where I've stepped in and said, you know, you're not using those machines, I have another use for them. And, and I've done that a couple of times, but not very often.
Fred?
There is a downside to this also. We, we find value in keeping the old machines and refurbishing them while we get new machines, but it adds to the complexity of the number of different types of machines and units that we're using and, and the limited number of people to deal with the different variations that exist in all the machines that we simply don't get rid of. So there is, there's a price to pay for that also.
May I add onto that? Couple, two years ago, I think now, I made a, I, I decreed, uh, from my podium, I said, we are not going to support Apple IIes anymore. We are not going, I told my technicians, I said, when a teacher brings one in and it's not working, we aren't supporting it. Um, it was toward, yeah, toward the end of two years ago. Last year, um, at the beginning of the year, I went to every building and, and I stopped and saw every teacher and every secretary and asked them where they were and what we were doing and that kind of stuff. And I was amazed at the number of teachers that were still using Apple IIes in the elementary school to do some basic, um, educational, uh, many of them were drunk and killed, but at least the flash cards weren't being flashed by the teacher, this computer was doing it, and doing it very well. And, and they were very pleased with what, I saw it in so many places, I went back and I told my guys, I said, we're going to support the Apple IIes again. We're going to support them because the teachers are still using them in an educational way. But you have to hear what Frank is saying, because when I did that, I just added a ton of extra work for my technicians. But I just, I saw so many people using that old technology and, and using it fairly effectively.
Is there a hand over here, sir? Any other questions for John? Lynn?
Uh, before you leave these sheets?
Correct.
If we're moving on to someone else? Okay, I have, I have one question. Why is there in fact not a high school priority list? I don't understand why there is none, since it is at every level. I just don't understand why. It's my first question.
Yeah, um, there is one that's being developed by some high school people now. Uh, for about a year, a year and a half, they did not have one. Um, I had discussions with Mr. Duran over this issue. We could not get, we had a problem that's similar to the middle school. Um, for a while at the middle school, we could not get people on the committee to make these tough decisions until Tim came along and, uh, really gave some leadership there on that one. Uh, we were having that same kind of problem at the high school. I had some discussions with Mr. Duran on it. I said, we need to do, I want some kind of high school committee if possible. If you can't get a committee, how about your department heads doing it? If you can't get the department heads to do it, I will do it. If I don't do it, you need to do it. And his decision basically was just to handle it on his own at that time. And therefore, when he wanted something, he just gave and told me, he said, this is my priority. So that's, you know, the history there. Um, it, uh, as Martha might tell you too, it's sometimes difficult to get people on a committee who aren't there just for their own area, who are there representing more the global view. And, um, I think we had that problem too.
Okay. And then my only other question was on LCEs. Surely we would have no more than one at each school?
Well, we do actually at the elementaries, there's one at each elementary, except Kate, because Kate came, came with one as part of their package. And we, we did give them another one that was the same as these others.
Okay, just because there's two wings and I can...
Yeah. Uh, and the high school has, I believe, four.
Okay. Then my only other question is, do we ever do a time and use of study of any of our computers? Are they truly being used and, and how do we know? You know, the overmeasurability, how do we know they're being used?
It's a great question and no, we do not, and I wish we would. Um, especially on some of our labs. I think some of our labs are talked as though they are used often, but, um, I go back to when I had a lab and I used to make the kids sign in when they came in, put the time down, and when they left, they put the time down. And I told the minutes and I took it to Lanny Tavaldo and I said, we're using that lab eighty percent of the time, I need some more machine. And that to me was, was more of a selling point than anything in order to get more things. Because again, if you're not using the resources, why have they?
I totally agree. I, I remember doing that when I suffered. And I think it's an excellent, simple, little hand accountability piece.
Okay. Joe, did you have something?
Well, actually, I thought he was almost finished with his presentation, so I'll wait till I hear if he can answer my question anyway.
If I remember right, uh, this, the board was also interested in the four, the labs at the high school and where we are on those, is that correct? Is that...
Yes.
Okay. Um, that I will attack here next.
Excuse me, Ken. Just a point, I thought we were doing this at the November the tenth or fourteenth or whatever meeting that is.
We do have Marla and her group scheduled for November fifteenth.
Also, we're having two presentations, one tonight and one again on the fourteenth?
This is what they've, what's been changed since that point in time?
Oh, I see.
Current information?
Already.
Your hand. Can you go on that map, please? Um, at your last meeting, several people came and were asking some questions about their labs and why their labs were not completed by the beginning of the school year. Um, I don't remember, but I believe one of you asked that. We come back and give a report tonight on that. Uh, this is the first of several of these, and, and hopefully you won't get lost, I don't mean lost, you won't get tired of the detail because hopefully you'll start understanding the complexity of what we are dealing with in some of these cases. Um, Frank, let's see, if I remember right, on the very first page of this, well, one I just handed out, right in about the middle, I sent an email on Tuesday, the twenty-third of October, um, thirteen fifty-five, I don't know what time that is, I'm not good at that stuff. John Leonard, I had originally planned that you would use Thursday and Friday of this week to fix the serious problem of domains and the lack of security we have on them. I have been directed by Mr. Harrington to expedite the fixing of the four HS Windows labs noted below. I want you to attack the problems and document all aspects of this work. So what I actually did was take our consultant and instead of putting on a, a very serious problem that we have, by the way, extremely serious problem, um, in fact, you'll see he mentions it in here, put him on the other one. And what I did is before that is I asked John Van Leeshout, um, to talk with each one of the teachers involved in those labs as to exactly what they needed done so that they would be able to do that on that Thursday and Friday, or at least work on it on Thursday and Friday of last week. So if you turn to the next page, you'll see it says, from John Van Leeshout. Can you see that greater than sign, you know, the alligator opening up to the left arm? John wrote, this list was composed on October twenty-third, I talked with all the teachers except TC, which is Tom Cornelius. Excuse me, although he had sent me several emails and had a list on his board, if anyone has any questions concerned, email me. So there you'll see the greater than sign, number one, um, high school room one zero three, Joyce Batchell, says that needs new keyboard on all machines, is what he said. Now, the next line down is a response I sent back to him before that date. Now, the next line down is a response I sent back to him before that date. "I said, 'I will order keyboards for this room. I want you to randomly select four keyboards, clean them, and see if that does not fix the problem of keys sticking. Document this for me.'" One of the problems I find is that we often, instead of cleaning, buy new. And this one bothered me. We are talking about twenty-five computers, and I'm being told that everyone needs a new keyboard.
He's drinking pop here.
Now, the next line, as you see, is in intalics, which is John Van Leeshout's response to me after they had worked on the room. He says, "Leonard looked at the keyboards. He said that it would be more efficient to replace the keyboards than attempt to clean them. Cleaning would possibly make them worse." When I get that from a expert... Leonard is the consultant, one of the consultants that we bring in to the district, works for Boliath Networks, works with Chris Dolke, who Frank talked about earlier. So, if we go through these, I'll try to keep it straight for you. John, in Joyce's room, said he had, they needed to install the network on as many machines as possible in the room. In other words, four machines per workgroup will have network, one will not. And that's a limitation of that room, that there was not enough network cabling put into that room from the beginning.
What point of view did that? And rightly so, we were told earlier that we shouldn't be mentioning names here in an open session, and I'm concerned if we can't be mentioning names, which I understand that. Are we improperly mentioning those names now?
You know, my thought and my recollection is when we mentioned names in a negative or potentially derogatory manner, and we're talking about what's been done to improve the situation. I don't know that these are negatives, or not being punitive or the like. And if there's an indication of that, then we should not be using the names.
Well, the reason I raise the issue is because of Pat's statement earlier in the very beginning of the meeting, that we should not be using names in an open session. So, I'm just concerned that we could have some ramifications by using names in the beginning or in the end.
And not with names, you know, in terms of making, as Frank said, comments or complaints. Possibly, John, you could just talk about the high school room number, and then we won't have that issue.
My response to my technician's comment there, this could take a long time, was that I'm not sure why this is needed in this room. The room did not have it last year, and the room wasn't interested in having it last year. And I said, "Unless you can give me some good rationale why we should do it now, leave this networking of the room until another time." My concern there, of course, is the amount of time it takes to do a net, to network that room. They had two days to work on what I would call problems, and that was... Anyway, my technician's response then afterwards is he said that he did not network any of those computers.
John, were you talking about the wiring part of it?
Yes, that's a wiring issue.
The wiring issue, okay.
HS103 underscore zero eight. One of the ways we designate computers in labs is by first, the school, HS stands for high school, then the room number, 108, and then underscore, because it's a Windows area, and they can't have spaces, and then zero eight would be the eighth machine in that room. So, the eighth machine does not work due to a bad hard drive or bad network card. My response to him was, "Do you have these parts on hand so that when the determination is made, you can repair it? If no parts, send me what, where, and how much?" Now, he said he did have the parts, but he also stated that he replaced the machine with a good computer, and he said he would check the NIC card, the network interface card, at a later date. So, he actually didn't do what I suggested, but he put a new, or a different computer in there, and said it's a brand new one. It's a different one in there. Number four on the bottom, HS103, 21 and 20 fleet three are flaky but working. And my response to him beforehand is, "Not good enough. Identify what flaky means and have Leonard look at it and give us his opinion." He did not respond as to what they decided to do on that, but I'm going to be showing Leonard's responses to this shortly, and he does respond to that issue. HS103 22, "Not working due to a bad hard drive and incompatible parts with ghost image." Again, I asked him if he had those parts on hand. If so, we would have to get them. If not, I would have, we'd have to order them. He didn't respond in here. But again, Leonard does respond to it a little later, I believe. Printer for HS103, 19 through 23, "Not working. I asked him to have Leonard determine the problem and let me know what needs to be done." His reply back was that they replaced that last group of computers, 19 through 23, with five compact 84000s that we had pulled out of this building and an HP printer that was on it, that I don't know where they found it. Some printer we had sitting there, apparently. For those of you who look carefully at the district technology priority list, you will see that we replaced four or five computers in this building this summer. I don't let these people keep their old machines in this building. I take them back, and what we did is we actually stuck them into this room for this teacher. Now, this is what becomes a real problem for us, and it relates back to Jeff's concern before. We now have a lab that have twenty computers of one type and five computers of another And in terms of other working on that room, that is a problem, because we cannot have the same, exactly the same software on all machines. It gets down to an issue of the drivers for the hard disk on one model are different than the drivers for the hard disk on another model. So, when we need to go in and work on the computer, we have to be aware of those issues. And it's one of those things that you'll wonder why sometimes we didn't fix it and we walk away, is because we probably brought the wrong piece of software to try to fix it, because there are so many pieces that we need for these things. Number seven, "Creating ghost image with deep freeze." Now, this is... I go back to my technician, "This is not a priority. I want the labs running. Deep freeze is not part of the immediate need. I know it would be valuable, but you only have two days. Do not attempt this and then not have time to have labs functional." There are lots of things we would like to do and experiment with, but I do not feel we have the time in these two days to install this program and make sure it was running correctly. He responded by saying, "I will be working on a new ghost image with one of the two spares that came out of that room. When it is ready, I will let the teacher know so she can check it." And basically, what he's saying back to me is, "Anytime you put a new piece of software on a computer, you have no clue what might happen." Okay? The last thing I like to see happening is us install a new piece of software on twenty-five labs and computers in a lab, and the next day get a call from the teacher saying, "Number four is flaky. Number eight is flaky. Number sixteen's flaky." I like us to test software somewhat, but if you looked at the schedule my technicians have and that I have, we don't have much time to test. And we often run into a situation where it's not until after the fact that we get caught. I did want that to happen here with this thing called deep freeze. Deep freeze is a new program. We think it's going to do some neat things, but we have never tested it on anything here in the district. I don't know if you're even interested in what it does, but it should protect the computers from kids trying to goof up the software on the machines. That was the one lab. That's what he said he found in the one lab.
And in the interest of time, John, I think we're getting close to this. Can we just, can you come and read it and go through?
The next lab is very short. It's just, there's five items that he said were there. One of the really problem ones there is number, excuse me, not number two. Number three, "Install scanner and inkjet printer on HS10610." And they did not do that because our consultant did not want to install this. Again, it goes back to two things we were just talking about. As soon as you start installing a new piece of software, i.e. that scanner software, you're going to introduce possibly some errors. We would like to leave it like that, the way it is, make sure it's stable before we add it. The second one is, my guess, what they're really saying here is that they wanted to network this inkjet printer. I try to make it very clear to people that when we buy them a cheap hundred and twenty dollar inkjet printer, that they cannot network it. Soon as after they get in the room, they forget what I told them, and they want them networked. And as soon as we network those cheap printers, we have problems. I was just telling my technicians the other day, I just, I wish I'd never had told some of these elementary people that we could do that for them, because we have what we call a sattee print servers all over the district now. And about, at least twice a week, we get a call from someone who says a printer can't, doesn't work. And the problem is, we're trying to do more than these cheap printers can actually do with them. I'll move on to that HS108 room. The very first item there is one that you may hear about, so I will definitely... The instructor wanted us to create a new ghost image with Altrus Vision, deep freeze, choices in color, desk jet driver on there. I told my technician, "Absolutely no. Do not install Altrus Vision unless we have purchased a new license and we understand what it will do on the machines." One of the things teachers tend to forget is that you have to pay for every piece of software you put on computers. So, when they request that we do something for every machine in the room, we can't do it unless we have a license for it. By Altrus, we do not have that license for that. The other thing, as I say there, do not introduce this new software without first testing it with the existing software items. Altrus takes memory and CPU cycles, neither of which we should use here unless we have tested. See above concerning deep freeze, and I had made the same comment earlier about deep freeze. I know they're not happy about that one, because they wanted it on there, but I absolutely refuse, because number one, we don't have legal copies for all of it, and two, we have not tested it with the software that we are running on that machine already. Down below, I also, again, comment on sharing of the inkjets is not recommended, and I said, "Leonard, please advise." This is number five toward the end of the page. And Leonard recommends that we get a HP Jet Direct for this printer, if it is to be printed to from the entire class. So, he agrees with me, says you're going to have to spend some money if you want to do that. The CAD lab is the last one there, and that runs for one, there's six items there. This is an area that, first of all, I'll go to Jeff's question, number three, "Update memory." There are three memory slots in the computer. They now have three sixty-four meg sticks for a hundred and ninety-two meg of memory. This teacher received new software this summer. The new software was a grant, actually, and everybody was really eager about it until I saw it afterwards, and I said, "Wait a second, those machines don't have enough memory in it to run this new software." So, he put, we are putting the new software on it, but the machines don't run very well, because we don't have enough memory in there. So, we have a couple options, and what I say there is, "I will order more memory now for this guy. I will order some memory, but we will actually have to throw away memory, because there's no more slots available on this machine. We have it filled up with sixty-four meg sticks. We're going to have to go up by a hundred and twenty-eight meg sticks, take these out and put the other ones in." So, it's one of those things where, and it's a great program he has. It's AutoCAD, and it's the newest version, and it really gives our kids, in my mind, a leg up on other kids, because they are using the state-of-the-art piece of software for drafting. But it just killed me when I got it, said, "Oh, man, we won't be able to do that yet." So, and it lives along, but it, machines crash once in a while, and that's... The next one down is one that bothers me, and I'll take it back to the AutoCAD thing, because he said, "Check out the default paper size for laser printer." That was one of the complaints the teacher had. And my comment to him back was, "Should this be something the instructor should check on?" I mean, I'm not sure why we're checking on the default paper size and being told this is something they want the technicians to do. And I asked, "Is this for all programs or specific ones? Is it just AutoCAD doing this, which is the main machine, program they use?" Again, we cannot be experts in all software. Is this something that should go through the company that sold us the software? And my technician came back and said, "This one ought to be fixed in the next image." So, it's something he did find, he found the problem, but it took him some time, and he just told me he's going to fix it. I'm not going to ask too many questions on it. Just have him fix it then. "Check the laser printer for noise impossible where?" And my technician came back, "The noise is just normal where on the printer, it should be fine." People are going to complain that things are getting noisier, and, you know, they do, with age. So, that's those. The next, the last page, I don't need to discuss too much of the last page, because it really isn't related to the labs. It's related to all of the other things that we have going on here. On that date, whatever it was, I don't remember the date now, we found that there were one, two, three, four, five, six, seven machines in the high school and the central office and Head Start that were infected with viruses that our virus software could not stop. Even though we have the state-of-the-art stuff, it could not stop them, and it could not remove them. So, we have to go manually to each one of these machines and figure out what's wrong with them, remove those pieces of software, and redo it. This is a very tedious process. We have one, two, three, four machines that have Circum virus on it. We have two with a hybris, one a plug and one a worm. And they're very, they take a long time to fix. Now, we hope the one, the second one down there, since we shouldn't mention names, you should take a look at the second one down there, we hope he doesn't complain that his machine's not working, because if he does, then he has to go work on it right away. But if he can, if he doesn't even notice, and it often will happen, you'll have a virus and not even know it, and if he's living with this long enough, maybe if we get time to go over and give it a...
I don't know if I have to say anything.
But that's, that was, and then on the bottom of it is some more stuff, just things that we need to do on our servers to keep them up to date and stuff like that. So, we actually asked the school system if we could shut down the servers at 2:00 PM on Wednesday instead of 3:30 and 4:00. Boy, I thought I'd catch it for that, asking them to shut down a few, but I didn't want to stay all night on that one.
Six minutes to tape.
On my tape here?
Yes.
Thank you, because I'll have to stick another one in. I think I have one more.
How is it on time, John? Are you getting it on there?
Okay.
So, we can...
Again, I will now give you Leonard's responses, so that you can see what has, what we have done. And maybe you can see why I won't ever say, "Yep, that lab's up and running," because we will always find something wrong with machines, always. Much of this is the same, so I might, I'm going to go through all, because it, again, is just a response to the response to the response kind of thing, helps us remember what we said the first time through. And these are Leonard's, the consultant, I shouldn't use his name, the consultant. His responses back to me, he sent this on Sunday, October 28th, it looks like. And in the interest of time, unless you have specific questions, the one I do, there are two actually, though I do wish to... Um, the one I do, there are two actually, though I do wish to... Um, the second page. One of the problems is, is, um, I, I don't know if you remember that one of the teachers complained that the machines were flaky. And toward the top of the page, about the one, two, three, four, five, six line down, um, by the way, this consultant is originally from a foreign country. So, his grammar and English skills are a little different than some people's. Um, Altrus Vision is already installed. If ki, uh, if, if the teacher still has problems with machines freezing up, this program would be one of the first I would suggest that you try to uninstall. See, here's a good example of somebody installed this program, not with my endorsement, and it's one of the first programs that this consultant thinks might be the problem of the flakiness of these machines. While going through the lab, I found Nutella-like applications. And Nutella is a, it's a nice little program. It's a nice little MP3 program. Um, but it's not something that we necessarily want on our machines. I recently read an article on these applications that, that one machine running Nutella or LimeWire could easily take up to eighty percent of your complete bandwidth due to all the people looking at these shares. Um, two recommendations to avoid this from happening. One, get deep freeze installed in the lab, which is, again, this thing that we have been talking about and looking at testing and trying to, to get out there. Um, the fact that these applications was installed points toward lack of supervision unless the teacher installed them, question mark. And his second, um, recommendation, block the ports used for application like these on your firewall. Can't speak for other, all applications, but Nutella and LimeWire use ports sixty-three, forty-six and sixty-four, forty-seven. Uh, I can tell you, lab folks, that I have tried to block the major ports used by things like Napster, et cetera, et cetera. Um, but I cannot keep up with all of the different ports that these programs use. Um, not that I will add these to, to my list, but, uh, these kids are faster than I am by far. Um, and then the only other one I wanted to mention, on the bottom of that page in lab one oh six, uh, your technician created a new, new ghost image for this. He installed ghost seven dot partition deployed image, not with all difficulties. I noticed that when logging to the network, people got the policies and login script that is stored on DNS, not the one stored on student. This leads me to believe that the server student is in way worse condition than we first expected and that server DNS is pulling most of the burden with logins. What he's referring to here is, there is a server at the high school that I am not responsible for. It is a student server that is being run by the high school people. Now, historically, I was running that and it was doing a lot of the work on the network. When it got moved to the other side, um, we have a backup one called DNS and it looks like, according to the consultant here, that the, the one that the high school is running is in really bad shape and something needs to be done with that. Um, that was part of what I wanted him to work on that Thursday and Friday, but after Frank's note, I then changed it over to the other. So, uh, he too believes that, that machine's in big trouble and it is.
When you say that student server's being run by the high school, do you mean students or do you mean teachers?
No, by the staff, yes.
Staff, okay, thank you.
Okay, the last page of that is unrelated. It has to do with, um, our terminal servers. Um, uh, we're trying to figure out why Skyward is so slow. Uh, we have all noticed the slowness of Skyward. We have done some minimal testing on it. Uh, we cannot figure out why at this time with the testing we've done. One of the things I found last, let's see, I, I sent this to him on Sunday, October twenty-eighth at twelve, six PM. I was doing some work on the servers and I noticed that one of the profiles was huge, forty-five meg in size. That, that's huge for a profile and I don't understand why. So, I wrote back to him and I said, hey, why is that so big? And he's answering that question up there. Um, we all agree that we need to fix that problem to down the road when we all get chance. That is all I have on the lab situation. Um, I will tell you that they are better. Uh, I do know that John, that my technician received an email from one of the teachers saying that he didn't do anything in her room. Uh, I talked to him about that. He said he wrote her back and explained to her what he did do and that, uh, what she was really complaining about was that he, he didn't put deep freeze and, uh, deep freeze and Altrus on her machines. And I said, if she's going to still complain, have it talk to me because I'm the one that told him not to do that.
Okay. Do you have anything further for us tonight or is that good?
Not in those four labs, no.
Questions for John, comments? Joe?
Just one quick question, uh, I think about everything he said tonight, but, um, I'm going to say, I know. And darling, we've got all kinds of lists here about what the, um, requests are. Do you have a list in the district of all the computer or technology equipment that we have in the district and where it's signed to?
Yes, we do. Um, that's all I needed.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions, Lynn?
Um, how, what's, I'm getting a sense that there's some communication breakdown, maybe somewhere, somehow. Um, and maybe, you know, I'm wondering if the board can help at the policy level to improve communication between, uh, staff and technology? Or, or maybe I'm just way off base. What's hap, I mean, can't seem to, I mean, there's things and maybe it's just the nature of the exponential use of technology. But, um, seems to be a breakdown somehow and I, I think if we can do anything as a board to improve it, I'm interested.
I, I can tell you, my experience with talking with other technology coordinators, all of them are, are, become as frustrated as, as I am. Um, because of the explosion and the lack of training of the end user. And, and, and again, I got to be careful how I say that because there are so many times we walk into a situation that we don't know why it didn't work either. And yet, when we walk in there, it turns on and it works. Uh, had that situation happened to me tonight, no clue why. But it worked when I walked in there. Didn't work for the end user. Um, we all, technology coordinators tend to get very, very frustrated because we get so bogged down in having to fix all these manual problems. Uh, I was saying, telling someone tonight, what I really would like to do is focus on, um, how to use this technology in education and, and the programs. And I spend all my time looking at detailed problems like you're seeing and hearing.
Um, I mean, I'm just trying to, I mean, and maybe the technology committee addresses these kinds of issues, but maybe there's some basic ground rules that we can say that no staff installs or no so, um, um, you, the word was abused, but how misuse perhaps keyboards are. I mean, that is just, that's just sign postings and somebody, somebody bird dog in the room. And that, I mean, the pop, I mean, my guess is some of this is sticky. Well, we know what's probably in there, you know, Coke or Pepsi, I don't know. That's just a no-no when it comes to keyboard use. So, I guess I'm, I'm, I'm thinking there's opportunities here to improve the process. What do you think?
I will definitely take that, or Martha, Martha and I, I'm sure will take that back to our committee and talk more about that. Um, I, this, this may be contrary, and this is contrary to what a lot of people believe in me, but I, I've always felt, I, I don't like to dictate. I don't like to have power, which, like I said. And I like people to be able to do with their machines what they feel they need to do with them. Um, I was talking about technology coordinators before. I know, one, that the teacher can't touch the machine. They cannot put any software on it, like you were saying, they can't make any changes to it. The problem I have with that is you stifle creativity. You stifle the person that wants to push the envelope and move forward and do things that you, that I haven't thought of yet. So, I like to err on that side where, um, as I tell people, I don't care if you screw up the machine and you tell me about that you did it. And I'm talking about teachers now, not students. Uh, though I actually used to do that with my students in Comp 7. Um, with teachers, if they're pushing the envelope, you know, I don't have a problem with that as long as, when they do it, they tell me, John, the reason it's not working anymore is I installed that software, that might help you solve it and, and that's better. So, I, I'm not going to, I hear what you're saying, Lynn, but I, I'm personally not comfortable with, with tying down machines so tightly that people cannot be innovative.
I, I guess, I guess just, just one more comment and I'll stop. Is that I, I hear what you're saying and especially as an educator, I understand. But at some point, you can make the envelope for this particular category of user large enough to go there, but when they want to go to that next envelope, which is, or, you know, their territory of development and use of computer use, then you just need to check in with somebody. You know, hey, I'm, I'm, I'm done with this and I really want to expand to that. What do I need to do so that they're not gumming up not just their, their computer or their specialized lab, but so they're, they're not affecting your entire system and really cutting into your network, I mean, your technology technology. That's all I have to say. Martha?
Our, the technology committee has not really addressed it because I don't think they, they feel they have the authority to say that. I mean, I, I think that would need to really come from the board, I really do. And I, and I agree with Lynn to this point. I don't think our district can afford to pay a consultant to come in and troubleshoot for things that teachers have added to their, and we don't even have a log that they did it. Um, you know, I think if it's a school machine and they want to buy some software and they want to put something on, I, I don't want to stifle that either to, to some respect. Um, I do that with my own machine and, and if I screw it up, then it's my problem and I have to find somebody to, to fix it up. And, and I guess the, the thing is, I think that right now it's hurting the district budget-wise and time-wise for our technicians in hiring consultants from Goliath to be going around trying to troubleshoot for things that John didn't even know were on the computers or things that aren't compatible. And I really appreciated the mental that Frank put out saying, um, you know, you can't put something on that is compatible because that was happening. And so then they just wanted to upgrade it. And I think our district really needs to be, um, to have some guidelines and I really think they do.
And I, I don't think we have any more time for you to, you know, proceed on the technology issue this evening. If you have more things for us to read that you'd like to give us with a small explanation, that'd be great or if we can continue it another time.
Two things, just one, with Martha's comment just now, um, you have to be a little careful. While we're sitting here, listening to you earlier, I sent an email to everybody in the district suggesting that they upgrade their version of Acrobat Reader to version four on their own machine. And I gave them the URL, the where to go out and get this piece of software. Instead of me having to go and touch every machine, I'm sort of hoping I can get people to do some of that on their own. If in fact you have this policy, then it would require me to go out there and touch it, possibly. You know, I mean, however, you're right, it's be a little careful with that.
Trying to choose something.